Microphones, everyone. We are right on schedule. Thank you, staff. We're going to call this meeting to order January 12th, 2021. Special meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome, everyone. Introductions. To my far left is Finance Director Brad Rickert. To my immediate left, Commissioner Christopher Pash. To my immediate right, welcome again, Commissioner John Herzog. To his right, County Legal Counsel, John Huddle. His right, Staff Jesuit. In the audience, we have, it's hard for me to keep saying Deputy Treasurer, but Treasurer Debbie Crumley. Welcome, everybody. I'm going to give some real good news here on a COVID report, real quick. We just got this information late yesterday afternoon, and after a little bit of a series of misprints, the news remained very good. It's a COVID-19 report. Curry County is one of the few counties in the state that's actually dropping two levels from extreme to moderate. We've double-checked that because the news is almost too good to be true. But the four categories most would remember are low, moderate, high, and extreme. So that is very good news for our local companies, and the levels will be effective from January 15th, so this coming Friday, for a two-week period. So we received that from the Governor's Office yesterday afternoon. So quite an honor to be sitting here today. It's a very important day for our county, and I think we can move our county forward. Very confident in that. We know our country is greatly divided. In our local communities, however, this is where we can make some very positive differences. Takes hard work. As we humbly occupy the seats of this bench, we want the people to know we're doing our very best to be guided by strong principles. As the Curry County Board of Commissioners, we and our staff are meeting and working today to appoint the most qualified possible person we can for the candidate of Treasurer vacancy, Curry County. Reminder, this is an elected position. Whoever we select likely hopefully will serve for two years until early about this time in 2023, two years. If he or she wishes to continue as a Curry Treasurer, would need to file for reelection by Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, which is the county candidate election filing deadline. Again, that decision would be their choice. Yesterday was necessary to change the start time from 2:00 this meeting, this special meeting, to 11:00 today due to the number of applicants. We have a total of five. That time change, we do apologize for any inconvenience. Each of the five interviews is scheduled, allowed for 45 minutes. We've set the times in the order the applications were received by HR Director Julie Swift. The format for each interviewee or applicant is relatively simple. Deputy Treasurer Debbie Crumley will give each candidate a five-minute orientation of the specifics of the job and answer any questions that they may have. We'll then proceed with questions from the Commissioners, starting with the Chair, yours truly. Again, to keep this process fair, we essentially will be asking the same questions of all and each candidate. In order that the earlier interview applicants are not disadvantaged, I'm asking our Board for a separate executive session for each candidate. Finally, I'm guessing around 3:30, excuse me, we would go into executive session for each of those. Finally, I'm guessing around 3:30, we'll finish the day in regular session, if there's agreement here, to discuss, dialogue, and deliberate in our decision and in full public view. Please note, however, there's no public participation in this process. So Board, can I get an agreement on the executive sessions individually? Commissioner Pash?
You might want to do the approval amendments of the agenda first.
Okay. We are tru-
I'll move to, well, you want to ask if there's any?
I don't think we need a motion, but if we have Board agreement, that would be very helpful to know.
No, sir. On number two, we have to do the approval and amendments of the agenda.
We can come right back to that. So can we stay on this subject real quick? And do you have an agree with that?
I'm in agreement to go into executive session to protect each applicant from their questions being viewed and answers being viewed by others, yes.
Thank you.
I have a question for clarification. Is it the Boards? I understand the purpose of exec session is to keep things fair, and I know we have a balance between fairness and openness. Is it, I can think of one example in the past where after the exec session purpose was served, we have actually opened the exec session recording as public. Would that also be something the Board would entertain?
I would. I wouldn't. I don't know what the basis would be for that. Why?
Oh, I see.
Is there a need to do that or benefit?
Well, these are, these are public, you know, they're replacing an elected official, and I'm just thinking of the balance of transparency and fairness, and so that's just a question.
So do you think that we would then, okay, so those separate interviews would be available to the public after we make our decision?
Right, but in the interest of fairness, they wouldn't be disclosed until everyone's gone through the process.
I understand. That's good, and that was the basis for our taking this path, I think.
Okay, so good. That's just for clarity, just so usually the idea is what's spoken about in public in exec session doesn't get spoken about, but here at least, because of the nature of the position, after everyone's had a fair opportunity, then it would just, it would be posted on our website likely. I don't think we do a video. It'd be a minutes on the cassette. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pash, did you have something?
No, I am in full agreement with that, that exactly the way the Council stated that was after we've made a decision, then to let the public see the process of how this Board arrived to that decision through the questions that were asked and the answers that were given is very fair to the public.
Okay.
You're okay, too.
I'm good.
I think we have full agreement, consensus on that. We are truly grateful to have the five excellent and brave candidates, emphasis on brave, and who are willing to serve our county. Schedule as follows: 11:00, David Barnes; 11:45, Elizabeth Neketon, please forgive me if I'm mispronouncing that, I think that's correct; 1:30, George Rhodes; 2:15, Douglas Baker; and 3:00, Larry Minkler. I want to take just a moment to extend a sincere gratitude to our staff. They have handled this all in great stride. I'll refer again to Curry Deputy Treasurer Crumley, Human Resource Director Julie Swift, County Legal Counsel John Huddle, Director of Finance Brad Rickert, and of course, Staff, John Jesuit. This, to get to this day in a short period of time, has been a total team effort. So Commission Vice Chair Herzog, any questions, concerns, or comments?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pash, please.
Yes, I just have one thing. As you can see, it's already 11:10, so we're eating into the first applicant's time. I'm just wondering if we can extend.
Absolutely.
So he gets 45, so it would extend actually to about 12:15 would be the meeting if we can wrap this up in the next five minutes or so, so that everyone has fair time. That's all I'm asking.
Good. Council Huddle, any questions, concerns? Director Swift's not here right now. Director Rickert, excuse me. Do you have anything you want to add or questions?
No, I, no, I don't.
For now?
No.
Okay, thank you. So let's go to the agenda. I need discussion or a possible motion on approval or amendment now the agenda with changes?
I have no amendment changes.
Neither do I.
I make a motion. We approve the agenda as-
I second. Oh, excuse me. I second.
Good. Any further discussion? Okay, so we're going to close the regular session. We're going to-
Roll call, please.
Oh, we need to vote, I'm sorry.
Mr. Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, John. So we're going to close our regular session, go into executive session, ORS 192.660A to consider the appointment of an officer. All right. Okay, we're out of executive session, back into regular session. Again, the date is January 12th, 2021. We just left executive session, OR 192.660, 1A, employment of a public officer. Glasses fogging up. So now we're ready to have our deliberations. I'll tell you, pretty tough duty, huh, guys? Got some incredible candidates.
Yep.
Incredible candidates. I want to, I want to tell the public and the Board certainly I have no conflict of interest related to this important decision today. However, I am declaring to the Board and the Citizens, I've worked with George Rhodes. Boy, I've got to know him the last four years, as I have with Terry Hanscom, former Curry County Commissioners, David Brock Smith, certainly Lloyd Olds, David Itzen, Georgia Nallen, Lucy Labonte, Rocky McVeigh. These people all take my calls, and they are tremendous resources, and I'm-
Bill Waddell.
Bill Waddell? Shoot, I wouldn't want to leave him out. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm truly in awe of their strong commitment, how much they still care for this county and are willing to help. So I rely them a lot. But that, I'm going to be recommending Former Commissioner Rhodes. And then, but yeah, there was all five really good candidates. You mentioned the Chico Bar fire with Recovery Counsel, that we had dozens of meetings, dozens of meetings, and you know, I shared his passion and the pain and the reality of the damages that did to our watersheds and our forests, our wilderness, and and he's just a great Curry County citizen, as are all five. So that's just that disclaimer there. It wouldn't affect me because I've known him and grown to rely on his vice counsel. So I'm going to go to Commissioner Herzog if you have any comments or a direction that you would like the Board to go right now and as we pursue this selection on a very, very important elected position.
My number one pick would be Douglas Baker.
Okay. Anything you want to add to that?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Pash?
Well, first, I would like to also say thank you to everyone that showed up here today to brave what they did to get here. I was very glad to see that they all showed up, actually. I want to begin this on a sad note, and the sad note is that we had, you know, with what happened in the election this year, and I know it's looking back, but it's sad because we had a candidate that got 40, almost 45% of the vote. That had things turned out differently, she would probably be the elected Treasurer. That said, because of the process that this Board brought forward, we have, in my opinion, have two very qualified people to be Treasurer that are hands down, in my opinion, way overqualified to be a county Treasurer. My, my choice to be Treasurer would be David Barnes. His depth and the amount of work that he has put into his profession over many decades, knowing him personally, meeting with him on a lot of occasions, talking about a lot of the different issues. He's been involved in this county for years, week after week, month after month, consistently gives freely and has offered to do grants, has offered to do a lot of things in the county. He's actually with the Sheriff's Department, did the Life Fest thing this year. He continually gives to the county. Him and I have had a few bad words at times. He's disagreed with me on some things, and I actually like that. I think partially we do well together because we're originally both East Coasters. I'm a New Yorker, he's from New Jersey, and we kind of speak our minds a little bit, sometimes go overboard, but for qualifications, I think Mr. Barnes, having the experience that he's had with some major universities, writing software programs, the understanding of auditing of grants, of the business sense that it would take to be the Treasurer of the county. Some of the references that he showed us here, I think far exceed what this county would need as a Treasurer's position, so I humbly submit his name as my first choice for Treasurer.
Back to you again.
Did we hear from the Treasurer?
Huh?
Did we hear from the Treasurer?
She's not in on the decision. We can. Do you want to?
Thank you for allowing me to be part of that interview. There are many, many COVID. We had five candidates that were all really good, but I looked at the persons that, you know, the people that were here, who we could work with, who would work well with the team we have, and their positive input. And I have to say, David Barnes has, he was, he did a great job. He has been a mentor to me somewhat, and I, you know, he's just always, he's positive, and I appreciate that. But that would be my take, for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you.
So will we, so we each have three different first picks, so I say my second pick? And then we do the adding up of that way?
I think that'd be fine to go that route. I have a little bit more to comment, but maybe I'll do that and come back to you. You know, I was in business a long time, employed a lot of people, and so George Rhodes has created a lot of jobs. He has an economic development background, which I think is going to be beneficial, would be beneficial to this county. He and Mr. Baker are both veterans. I'm not biased for that, but that, I think, gets a lot of the citizens' attention in this county. I think Mr. Rhodes is the best bet historically for how he gets along with people and how well he knows these departments in and out. He knows the taxing districts. He was here a long time. With a lot going on right now, I see him as a very stabilizing force, great wisdom, great kindness, great commitment to his country and his family, certainly his faith. I think he's very trustworthy, very trustworthy. You know, I could go on about him and some of the other Commissioners. He's available. When I say that I was impressed with the level of applicants, that was genuine. That was sincere. That was out of gratitude. So my second choice would be, yeah, Mr. Baker. And I didn't realize he'd been here nine years. He is, he's from North County, which needs good representation. I don't know how critical a factor that is, but I think it's worth noting. So that's my two. George Rhodes, number one, and Douglas Baker, number two. Really tough, really tough, but I'm grateful that we have some, again, highly qualified people.
So my number one would be Douglas Baker. My number two would be David Barnes.
I'll change my number one, because I'm not, to to Douglas Baker, then. Because I don't want to be in an impasse, and I don't think we can lose with any one of, any one of them. Yes, Mr. Commissioner Pash?
My, my hesitancy with Mr. Baker, and again, I think he interviewed very well. My hesitancy with him was his understanding of districts and economic development. He commented a couple of times that when he was asked directly about districts and economic development, that he didn't have any experience with that. Do I think he could get up to speed on it? Yes, but I think what we're getting with Mr. Barnes is a car that's full of gas and ready to go, you know? In my opinion, far and away the best candidate for the job with education, with experience, and he's been at this county day after day, week after week, month after month, year after year. Knows every facet of the county as well as our Treasurer just attested to, has been a mentor to her. He's mentoring our Treasurer, so that to me tells me that she has a lot of confidence in him as well. So I just find very little wrong with Mr. Baker, but I just want to say I think that Mr. Barnes is the five-star candidate, and that's just my opinion.
Do we need a second interview on those two? Probably not. Go ahead.
Well, I will say this, and I appreciate Mr. Barnes saying this. In his interview, can I, and I can share what was said in the interview, that if you see somebody that really wants this job and fits the bill, I have no problem with that. And he shared that again with me in the hallway, and I appreciate that, Mr. Barnes. And but, and I appreciate that, but I also, I mean, Mr. Douglas, or Douglas Baker was my pick first off, and I'm going to stick with that, and David was second, so how we come to a decision is-
Get out of the impasse.
Yeah.
So I could, I could use a motion. If you're ready to do that. Council Huddle, did you have anything?
No, I'm trying to remember how we have phrased these kind of things, but I think it is to direct staff to make a offer conditional upon background check is the typical thing, if there's going to be a motion to be made.
Good. Okay? So your motion is conditional on that? If you, if you're ready to, if strictly if you want to make a motion?
Well, if we're done deliberating.
I am.
Then I would make a motion that the Board I'm trying to think of the word, appoint, because this is an appointment, not an election. Douglas Baker as the Treasurer until the next voting election cycle.
Thank you. I will second that motion for Douglas Baker to become the appointed Curry County Treasurer to fill the vacancy that we're finding ourselves with a duty to fill. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the question. Staff Jesuit?
Commissioner, Commissioner Pash?
Nothing personal against Mr. Baker. I vote no.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes, sir.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried two to one.
I want to commend the Board for this hard work. Whoop, excuse me. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, David Barnes. I just want to thank the Board for the opportunity to be interviewed and considered for this position. As we said this morning in the interviews, I would more, I'd be more than willing to serve on the oversight of the Watchdog Commission for this on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, if you decided to implement one. And also, when the time comes, please call on me to be a member of your Budget Committee.
What an-
You know, again, thank you for the opportunity, and like I said, no hard feelings about anything.
Stay there if you would, mind, please. That's a terrific attitude, wonderful attitude. And you had mentioned, and I had not thought of this, the Coos County connection, to the extent that we might at some point. You also said something I really picked up on, Mr. Barnes, that was you would be willing to be the liaison on any possible future if we decided to consider that path. We've got some really good friends and connections in Coos County. They're very well managed. It's close, and I thought that was beyond noteworthy. And I'm very glad to hear you emphasize and offer again that you'd be on the Budget Committee, and I would not discourage you from running for Treasurer two years from now, you know, if we have that position.
Like I said, like I said earlier, the county found itself in a bind and needing somebody, and I happen to have the qualifications that you needed, so I offered my services. One thing I will offer to you now, though, is that over the next two weeks, as Mr. Baker trains with Ms. Crumley, that I would, I'd be more than willing to sit on and be trained as well, so that the county does have somebody who at least knows the function should something happen. We've gone a long time without having anybody, except for Ms. Crumley, who knows how to do the Treasurer's job. And in terms of controls and risk, that's not a good thing, you know? So if you were interested in that, you know, I wouldn't want to be paid for it, but I just, I would sit in on the training and just oversee, not interrupt in any way, but just so that I can learn it too, so that if something happens, there is somebody else who knows the process, knows that on the first of the month this has to happen, the 15th, and so forth, so.
Hey, stay there. We may very well, and this is a responsibility perhaps, we did not get done the last half of 2020. We need a Deputy Treasurer. And that sounds like, I can't speak for the Board right now, but I'm going to be encouraging that position. And since you were, you were runner-up here, I don't know why we wouldn't run to your telephone and say, would you consider that position?
I'm, like I said, I'm open to help the county in any way that I can. You know, we're a small community. People need to step up. It's part of my civic, what I feel is my civic obligation.
So we'll come back to that in just a minute. Go ahead, if you don't mind staying there. Commissioner Pash?
Well, I just, you know, we're offering this right now, and we're not sure it is contingent on a background check. And he may look at us and say, you know what, I've thought about this, and I don't want to make that commute every day. So I think right now it might be who of the Board for the few dollars that it is, if you wanted to, and Mr. Barnes didn't object, possibly do the background checks on both to expedite until we get a signed order from him saying it's good.
Council Huddle?
Or would it, is it the will of the Board that we make a, I don't want to act like it's a commodity here, but a backup offer? In other words, if, what is the will of the Board, if, for instance, as you say, Mr. Baker says, I changed my mind, would we, do we automatically go to Mr. Barnes? Is that the will of the Board, or do we want to come back and redeliberate? I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but that might be, we are in a pickle here, and it might be just the quickest way.
Yeah, it would expedite things.
I think that would, that would-
I don't think we want to deliberate anymore. I think we're-
That will be a, so a backup offer to Barnes contingent upon Baker, et cetera?
Yes. If that's all right with-
Yes, could we, before we do, before we do, can we go just a little further and make that job title Deputy County, Curry County Treasurer?
No, it was Mr. Barnes. I'm trying to rephrase what I thought the discussion was. Currently, there had been a motion passed that would make a offer to Baker contingent on passing background check.
Microphone.
Sorry. Thank you, Eric.
So anyway, the current, the current motion that, well, the action currently is to make a offer to Mr. Baker conditional on passing background check, but also, as Commissioner Pash raised, a possibility, he may say, I changed my mind after seeing, you know, the terms, et cetera. And then the question would be, do we want to, again, we don't have a lot of time. Do we want to have a backup motion that in the event Baker declines? Do we want to have a backup motion that in the event Baker declines, do we offer to Barnes? And that's the question, it's not titled deputy or any of that stuff, it's just, it would be filling the vacancy.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so is there a motion to that effect, you can say so moved?
So moved.
All right, any second.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Oh, sorry, Jay, your roll call?
You simplify things, that's good.
Very good.
Mr. Pash? Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
And there's no T in Herzog, by the way.
Those Easterners.
So just, I want to give the commissioners each a chance for just a quick closing comment. I'm just going to offer that, goodness, this is our fifth meeting so far this year, and I'm just proud of overall of what we've got accomplished. I think our meeting pace will slow down along with our agenda items. We're very anxious to get the new treasurer in position, and we've got a meeting tomorrow. Good job, guys, for being available and tuned in, and see y'all tomorrow at nine o'clock, unless anyone has anything additional. We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.